Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. It's nice to see your faces. I will start by reading sort of the rules for our Zoom school committee meetings. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, we are utilizing the Zoom conferencing platform to conduct our meeting and all board committee members are participating remotely. The goal is to maintain the spirit of the open meeting law, providing access and transparency to all proceedings. When appropriate efforts will be made to allow for public participation through the Zoom platform. Your patience with any technical difficulties is appreciated as we conduct meetings in this new way. So thank you, our order of business this afternoon. We are being recorded by WACA Cable TV and our plans are after opening sessions and agenda review and adoption, we'll have some time for public comment. Our administrative items include a COVID-19 update, bus fees FY20 and FY21, Driscoll Scholarship Appointment, Washington DC trip 2020, warrant approvals, consent actions including approval of minutes of April 8, 2020, acceptance of gifts and donations, committee reports of activities, member updates, action items, and then we will adjourn. So I will just start by asking the school committee members if everybody is okay with that order of business this afternoon?
Yes.
Yes.
And then I will take a roll call. So Mrs. Bates?
Here.
Mr. Kendall?
Here.
Mr. Terry?
Here.
And I am here, obviously, and Ms. Williams is absent at the moment. Hopefully she'll be able to join us at some point.
I think she just joined us.
Oh, excellent. Hey, Aaron. I will start then by asking if there are any members of the public that are on that would like to make a comment or a statement. Please raise your hand. If you have any trouble raising your hand with the controls, I can see just about everybody that's on here, so just try to get my attention that way.
Yeah, so Mark DeSoni.
Where are you, Mark? Okay, I see you. Hi, Mark.
All right, how you doing?
Good, thank you. How are you?
All right.
Did you have something you wanted to share with us?
I just wanted to make it somewhat of a quick thing saying that this town is doing greatly in both school and town management for getting information to COVID-19 out. I'd like to thank the schools for, school committee especially, letting me get back on board and being in the crowd with everybody else in here and happy to know that the people are being healthy and informative and transparent. Unlike a federal government, and I'm not gonna go there. And I'd like to thank the chairman and Mr. Adams. Keep keeping that hair on there, Mr. A. And I just wanted to say have a good afternoon. In my house, we're both healthy, me and my dad both. We're not infected or anything, anyways, just going by the rules of CDC and World Health and Mr. Warren, Mr. Herbert. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you for continuing to be such an involved citizen participant at these meetings. We liked hearing your input and having you, and I'm glad you're healthy. Moving on to our first item on the agenda, anybody else show up in between wanting to share anything? Okay, seeing none at the moment. I will move on to our COVID-19 update. Mr. Adams?
Great. I'm gonna go through a couple of things and then I'm gonna have today Kelly and then Mike Kyra give just an overall impression of how things are going within their buildings. And then next week, we'll continue to roll it out and have different principals and directors speak to how things are going from their lens. I think it's important that the community hears it and the school committee hears specifically some of the challenges, but some of the things that are, that we're overcoming as well. So quickly, Commissioner Riley gave an update yesterday, and I'm just gonna refer to my notes. A couple of things. One, we can expect a notice from the governor probably in the next five to six days. He said the other, the end of this week or the beginning of next week is regard to extended closure. And I don't know what that looks like, but we will most likely be closed, as I've said, at least through May. The governor is pretty conservative in terms of going incrementally, making changes, so I would anticipate that happening early next week or at the end of this week. There will then be some more potential guidance with regard to remote learning, but also with regard to, you know, enrollment of students, registration of students, identification of students. I know Kathy received some, you know, guidance with regard to our ELL population and screening and all of those things. They're still behind the scenes, the state level is working, they're working on a ton of different initiatives that they know they have to share, even potential rollout of what school would look like in the fall in understanding that the physical distancing or social distancing is going to have to occur even then. So what does that look like for schools? September 14th, which we voted on last week, is a, it's an interesting dilemma for many districts who are not actually negatively impacted in terms of the roadways or the Boston Marathon. So we're actually hoping we get, we've already made the decision as the towns around us have as well, but whether they're gonna treat September 14th as another Patriots' Day holiday for the state, that's coming from the governor. But obviously, you know, it would be, we'd be hard pressed to have school, obviously, in September 14th with the roadway on, you know, Union Street connecting the two schools or the high school and the middle school. So looking at FY21 budgets, yesterday, there was conversation at the state level with some economists and thinking that there's potential of a 20% reduction in revenues for FY21, which is pretty significant. If you just do the math on just our budget alone, if we were forced to reduce it by 5%, it's $1.3 million off our budget. It's pretty significant. So we don't know where that's going. I think the state is looking at having one budget created this year instead of having the House one budget, the governor's budget, House one, Senate, ways of meeting. So hopefully, they're working together to accomplish something by the end of May, early June. The town manager tonight is asking that we move town meeting to the end of June, which would hopefully give us some, a lot more time to look at the financial aspect of where we are as a community and to say, Commonwealth nationally. MCAS last Friday was officially canceled at the state level. As you know, the conversation occurs in two levels, right? So we're required by federal law that have some sort of tests at grades four, eight, and 10. That's the federal law for accountability purposes and financial purposes. And then state law as well. We do test three through eight, but the state law reads four, eight, and 10 as well. And the commissioner could not cancel any of the MCAS until it was changed or given the authority through the state legislature. So the governor actually signed the bill on Friday for school year 20, and they're still working through some of the competency determination pieces for our seniors and the kids who are graduating because, as the commissioner stated yesterday, those kids, the majority of those kids had an opportunity to take the, actually take the makeup exam for purposes of their diploma. But there are some other kinks that have to be worked out as well. And that's more guidance there is coming from the commissioner. The Student Opportunity Act that we passed last week will have to be submitted by May 15th now. They're looking at what do we do about summer programming for our students? And there's more, you know, that really worries Kathy quite a bit. If we can't get into our buildings, what does that look like in terms of our summer programming? Will it have to be a remote process? And again, we're waiting for guidance from the state level there. And I think for the most part, that is where we are. I will have Lisa just speak to quickly the amount of meals that we're serving and the process that's been undertaken so the school committee can hear that and ask questions of her, and then I'll turn it over to Kelly and Mike. So Lisa. Nope, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Okay, there we go. So things are going well. We are still doing deliveries on Mondays and Wednesdays, giving students two breakfasts and two lunch on Mondays and three breakfasts and three lunch on Wednesdays. As of today, our numbers were, we prepared for 81 pickups and only 71 people showed up. We did 26 deliveries. Monday was, we had a lot of people that didn't show up, could have been due to the weather. But, you know, we're prepared to serve people whether they sign up on the website or not. We've been really pushing that to have people sign up on the website. So if there are any dietary restrictions, we can accommodate them. But also, it helps us to let us know whether they can come or not. Now, certain families that have fallen ill will let us know, and I say great, we'll deliver them to you because we still want to take care of them, obviously. We're trying really hard. I know you all understand how I feel about processed food. So we're still trying to do good meals, but ones that travel well is obviously. The other thing we have to take into consideration is some of these families, the children are at home alone because the parents aren't working, so we don't want to send anything. They have to heat up themselves because you don't know what kind of restrictions their parents have told them, not to use the stove or not to use the microwave or something. So we're gonna start next week sending home some things that can be eaten hot or cold, knowing that if the kids decide to eat them before mom or dad gets home, they're not gonna die. You know, it's gonna be fine. It's all pre-cooked, but they will have the option of heating things up as well, just because we're all getting so sick of sandwiches. But we're keeping things going. I've changed the staffing a little bit just to keep certain groups together. So if anyone does fall ill, I will, I will know who I have to take out. So we've set up teams and everyone seems to be very comfortable with that. And that's about it. I'm kinda bummed, obviously, with everything going on. I was looking back at our February numbers and we had our best month ever in terms of participation. Our participation numbers were, they've been going up all year, but they were really, I mean, we were doing 59%, almost 60% at the middle school, which is terrific. Never thought I'd see those kind of numbers there. Everyone's in the mid to high 50s. So we were on a great roll and hopefully we're looking forward to getting back there when we come back to do service the way we used to do it.
Questions for Lisa?
I have a question.
Sure.
Lisa, are you, are you and your staff going into the kitchen itself early in the mornings to prepare all these meals? Is that how you're doing it?
What we're doing is we meet one of the maintenance, our custodial staff at the high school at 8 o'clock in the morning so they can open up the building for us, and we go in and prepare all the meals. We open it up for people to pick up between 11 and 1. And for those of you that are familiar with the high school cafeteria, there's a window in the kitchen that leads out into the teacher's room. So people come in that door into the teacher's room and we just hand it out that way. So it's a great setup. We tend to, once everything's made, we'll let people go so we don't have extra people in the kitchen. And I've always, I've also kept the teams to a number where everyone has plenty of space to work on their own because I don't want too many people in the kitchen at once. One of my staff and a parent actually made us some masks, which was great because I was having no luck getting any. And we got disposable aprons, and obviously, we're all about wearing gloves before this ever happens. So we're staying as safe as we can. And preparing things, like I said, we're preparing things fresh because we know that they're gonna have it. Monday is two meals and Wednesday is three meals, so we want to prepare them fresh that day.
Yeah, that's great. Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you. Any other questions for Lisa?
Any other questions?
Okay, so then I will ask Mike and then Kelly just to give a brief update of how things are, the remote learning process is going in your individual schools and go from there. Michael? Kelly?
Yeah, I'm, so, yeah, first of all, I want to be able to just give a quick note of gratitude to our teachers who are just doing a tremendous job, and all of them have come together. And we just got off two meetings, one with our multi-grade teachers and one with our fourth grade team. And we've been meeting with folks weekly just to get updates and how things are going. And there's a range of emotions that they're dealing with right now. And they're, they're doing their best, but sometimes it becomes overwhelming because they're taking on an enormous task. And I just don't think we can give them enough credit for all the work they're doing. So it's nice to be able to acknowledge them like this in front of you all because they are working so very hard. Particularly, we've been impressed by our guidance team too, who is reaching out to kids. We've developed a system district-wide right now. All of the principals collaborated along with Jen Cutler to make sure that we're able to check in with students who are not participating, that we're worried about for wellness checks. So every Thursday by 4:00 PM, our teachers are completing a sort of pseudo attendance form for us so we know what students have not, have not done any work really that we're worried about so we can, you know, incorporate some wellness checks for them. And our guidance staff has really taken a, our counseling staff has taken a huge burden on with that, which they're doing a tremendous job. Right now, the big conversation for us at the elementary level is about report cards. Our teachers are getting those finished so we can get those out to staff and get those out to parents. We had canceled school or moved to this new remote learning right around the time when report cards were finishing up. So now distribution has been a little bit of an issue. So we're figuring out how to distribute all those, and we've come up with a plan. But those are going to be distributed out to families by the end of the month along with progress reports for all of our families of special education students. Our participation has been pretty good. Yesterday, we did a, we started a, sent out a form. Claudia Bennett created a form for our teachers to let us know how students are participating. We've had about 50% of our teachers fill the form out that was presented to them yesterday. And it looks right now that we've got about an 80% participation rate, which is really terrific for the most part. I think that it fluctuates between classes and grade levels, but right now, we're looking at about 80% of our students are participating at least three times a week, which is quite impressive. I think as we're moving forward here, the next challenge that we're gonna have to take on is obviously placement. Usually around April, we start that process, so we're going to be having meetings with our teachers and our counseling staff to incorporate placement for the upcoming school year. And as you all know, we've been tasked with this transition at Mendez. So we've, we've sort of put that on hold for, to a certain extent in terms of the conversations because right now, the conversations have been heavy about how are we incorporating our remote learning. But now that our teachers have grown more comfortable with the process, next week, we are going to be getting back those conversations. We talked to our, our multi-grade folks today and we let them know that next week, when we meet with them on Wednesday, it's going to be back to that transition piece to make sure we have our, our plan fully implemented for next school year. And that was really the plan that we had presented to the school committee on the last time that I had presented to you live and in person. So we're still moving forward with that. We're excited about it. We know that we can do it. Mrs. Bennett has been working on the schedule for that during this time. So she's, she's been working really hard to create a schedule and have us be able to incorporate all of our specials into this new sort of format with only four neighborhood classrooms, so to speak. That's, that's really where we are.
Thanks, Mike. I'm actually gonna, we're gonna do a little pivot here. I think yesterday when I had the conversation with my principals and leadership team, I think I told them next week they were gonna present. But, but I know that Jen Cutler's prepared, so Kelly's got a lot of things on her plate, meaning that she needs to present to us as a, as a committee. So I'm gonna push her off with Dave till next week, but let Jen fill in a little bit of things that are going on, counseling piece.
Am I off the hook now?
You are, my friend, unless they, I'll let them ask you questions after. We'll let Jen get going.
Okay. Hi, it's nice to see you guys every week. I think it really helps me with the connection piece to see all, all your faces. And so I've been meeting, I meet Monday through Wednesday, I meet with each building's counselors on separate times. And that is such a nice connection for all of us. I think our counselors are so used to having that face-to-face connection. That's what they do. That's what their job is, that, you know, that's, it's particularly difficult. And they're being really creative and innovative, I think, with how they're reaching out to students. So we really, when we started this process, we really were starting basically by sort of reaching out to our students that we already were, our counselors were already seeing regularly and really kind of making sure they had their, their basic needs met, they had what they needed, and that they were keeping their connections with, with our counselors. And then now, as we've gotten really more into, now that we're really doing remote learning, our counselors have done some really amazing things. It looks slightly different at each level. But at the elementary level, each of our counselors is sending and creating these amazing weekly newsletters for their grade, and they're just fantastic. They use Smore, which is a really neat platform to use. And I just, I love what they put in it. I love seeing it every week. I'm hoping that parents are seeing that and showing them to their kids. They're sharing things that they're doing with their own children, families at home, and different SEL and counseling activities they can do, just to really keep that connection up for every single student. At every level, our counselors are popping in and out of class meetings and, you know, Zooms, Zoom sessions with teachers to keep providing that support for our teachers and identifying students who may need more. And, and just being there to be that, that face that our students and families and teachers can see so that they know that they're, we are there, they are there when they're needed. In one of my meetings today with the counselors, some of them were saying, oh, I don't, I don't know if we're doing enough. And I totally disagreed. They are, they're doing amazing. I said, right now, you're setting, you're setting the expectation that you are here and you have, and when they need you, they will come. And I said, and really prepare because they will come. I think the longer, in terms of mental health, the longer that this, this continues, we will have an increase. We already have students that are accessing our counseling services. They will come. It will be, get greater as, as things proceed. So I said, get prepared for that. You're gonna miss this time where you may have some lulls in your day. Our middle school staff just this week is trying a Google form where they're sending it to every student and the whole, it goes so, so let's say the sixth grade counselor sends it to the sixth grade, all the sixth graders and so forth. And basically, it's just asking, you know, how are you feeling this week? And then they can choose, oh, I'm feeling great. Oh, I'm feeling overwhelmed. How are you feeling about your schoolwork? Do you need a check-in? Do you need a support around academics, family, whatever? And so it was really neat today. They just ruled that out, I think, yesterday. And they already had like almost 300 responses of kids who had filled it out. And there were definitely, a lot of them said, no, I don't need a check-in. I'm feeling good. But there were definitely students that they hadn't connected with yet and that they don't typically see in the school setting that were saying, yes, I need a check-in. And they would say, oh, I want a text. I want to Zoom with you. I want to call. So we were all really excited about that response because I think that's kind of a less threatening way for students to know that they can check in with someone. So I think that's gonna be a really good way to make sure we're engaging and keeping in touch with our kids. And then as Mike was talking about, we have our student, you know, wellness form that Paul Carpenter helped us create or created for us. And that's really great because it's, it's helping us to, you know, keep track of all the students and make sure, really, as, as the counseling staff, you know, as I said to them today, your job is not to, you know, make sure students are doing all their work. Your job is to make sure that they're safe emotionally and physically and that, you know, are there any barriers to them? You know, what are the barriers that are, are making it difficult for them to engage right now? And how can we help? So I think right now, the biggest barrier is that feeling of just being overwhelmed because just as all of us are feeling overwhelmed with this new way of life, they are, you know, young kids who haven't really developed a lot of their executive functioning skills yet and are trying to figure this all out. So a lot of our counselors are doing a lot of sort of organization tips and, you know, turn off your notifications on Google Classroom and just go to Google Classroom and check. So to kind of lessen some of that anxiety that they're having. So those are some of the things that they're doing. I think they deserve a huge, huge applause. They're doing a fabulous job, and I'm really proud of all of them.
Thank you, Jen.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Does anybody have any questions for Mike or Jen?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So Jen, you said the counselors were sending out those forms to all the students?
So right now, it was just the middle school counselors who are doing that at the moment.
Oh, okay.
It may expand. We're kind of doing, well, different depending on developmental levels. Like our high school staff are going to all the class meetings, and then they're having open hour Zoom sessions following that every day. So they're kind of connecting with kids that way. And so I think that our, the Mendez counselors were thinking about doing a Google form as well. And then I think at the K2 level, probably would not be.
Right.
Yeah. So they're connecting in different ways. Yeah.
All right, great. Thank you. Thanks. That sounds good.
Anybody else?
Laurie, I have a question for Mike.
Sure.
Mike, I was, I was curious if you could just clarify a little bit about the engagement you talked about. You sort of said people are on, I think, three days a week or three times a week. Do you have a sense of how much of the work that's being assigned or asked for is being done? And based on what you're seeing, or beyond just what you've seen for current engagement, but also just feedback from staff, are you looking at any modifications in either workload up, workload down, different types of approaches as you're moving forward?
Yeah, so I'm trying to pull up that data again on my phone here so I can see it. But for the most part, it was, we asked teachers about how much work kids are turning in too, not just showing up on Zoom. So I think it's a total of about 80%
Okay.
for, for both of those things. In terms of, in terms of, you know, ramping things up or ramping things down, we've gotten a lot of great feedback from, from parents that we're looking at. And that's one of the things that we've been reflecting on during our weekly meetings with our staff. For the most part, I think, I would say the majority of the feedback that we're getting has been overwhelmingly positive. But, you know, every time we do get some feedback about, from parents, whether or not things have been too difficult or hard to navigate, I think a lot of the, a lot of the feedback that we've gotten has been hard from parents. It's been tough to pick for teachers is that we have to kind of rethink the communication that we're doing because it can become overwhelming for parents. So we're continuing to look at that and ways to make things easier. We've begun just printing things out for certain families. We're having a hard time navigating the online component, and we're figuring out ways to deliver the paper to parents. But in terms of the workload, I think for the most part, it's been working for most. And we've made accommodations for families who have said that it's just too much. But I haven't heard anybody say it's not enough.
Thanks, Mike.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, Mike and Jen. We appreciate all you're doing and all the people that are working with you. So, and to everybody else as well. Barbara, I don't know if Jim lost power, so I don't know if he's back or if he's able to get back. But I know that Barbara, I think that Barbara can speak to the next few agenda items. So Barbara, are you prepared to speak on the bus fees?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So before we actually talk about the bus fees, I just want to lay out a little bit where we are with negotiations with Connolly on payment for the remainder of this year. And then we will have an agenda item for you next week to actually take a vote. Um, and then we will have an agenda item for you next week to actually take a vote as to whether you will go along with proposed settlement or not. So let me just kind of frame it a little bit. Business managers have been working with Connolly, all the, all the districts that have, um, their buses. And Steve Sullivan from Connolly, who's their business manager, was also on our conference call today, explaining in detail how he did the calculations. I am very comfortable with how we did them. They're exactly how I would have done them. So they looked at the driver wages. Um, all of their drivers have been laid off. Um, and he took us through some, um, calculations showing that they're actually making more money with the $600 federal unemployment money than they would be making if they were working. And he's hoping that's not a problem. We'll try to get him back to work. But the cost for one driver for one day is $141.25. Uh, and that's based on five hours work, which is an average of $28.25. So that's what he's paying his drivers. So that's the, um, reduction that they're willing to pass along to us. The other one is the supervisor wages, the dispatcher. She must also be laid off. And then the third deduction was the cost of fuel not being consumed. And they took the daily miles that the buses do, times how many gallons they use, times the current rate at the gas stations and came up with $16.39 a bus a day. I had kind of done that calculation a few weeks ago for Jim and had pretty much come up with the same thing. So the cost for us per day for one bus is $374. If we subtract out those three amounts, they add up to $170.86. So that gets taken out. That's our savings per bus per day. So the proposed new rate is $203.15 per bus per day. That's 54.3% of what we would normally pay. So I did, um, some calculations for Jim. I'm sorry he's not here. I was hoping he could screen share it. I don't know how. But.
Jim's back. I'm not sure if he can screen share from his iPhone, but, but he is back if you need to ask him a question.
Okay.
Barbara, there's a green dot in the bottom middle of your screen. That says share screen. It's got the arrow up. You could click that. That might work for you.
And then I have to find the document. Did that work?
Yeah.
Oh, my.
Good job, Barbara.
So I did two calculations, one from both starting March 13th and one to the May 3rd, the date we're at now. And what if, what if we go out to the end of June? Um, so it's 30 days and 63 days. The savings for the regular bus from Connolly would be 97,385 for 30 days, 204,000 for the 63 days. Uh, we would also not pay for the three late buses that we have, four days a week. So the savings there are 4,464 and 9,300. I threw in the spring athletic bus, um, because that is what we budgeted to pay for buses in the spring. This is not a savings from Connolly, but it's a savings to our budget. So the savings for 30 days is 101,849 and the savings for 63 days is 241,456. But then Jim asked me to net out what would the net savings be if we do refunds, bus fee refunds? So I wanna talk about the two options that I put. One is we reimburse 100% of the 30 days or the 63 days. Or, um, the savings, it's 54.3% that we're paying Connolly still. So do we still pay 54.3% out of the bus revolving towards the payment that's still going to Connolly, which means the parents would get reimbursed 45.7%. So that's something that you all have to think about. So per rider, if you reimburse 100% of the 30 days, it's $43 or $20 if, if the reimbursement is the 45.7. And then 91 and 42 for the 63 days. So you can see what the net savings would be under each of those scenarios. Either way, I'm gonna tell you, there's a thousand people that, that paid into this. And that is a lot of work. We have to set each individual up as a vendor. Each one has to get an individual check cut. And this is just bus fees. We have other, areas where we're gonna have to refund also. So it's gonna be a few weeks after you vote before people start seeing this money. So I'll open this portion up for any questions before we talk about the fees.
Sorry, I, can you hear me again?
Yeah.
I apologize. I lost power. Um, hopefully it didn't impact your ice cream, Kathy.
I hope not.
A couple of things. One, right. Two things. One, uh, we're not looking for any votes today, uh, but we do need to make some decisions by next week when we have our next meeting. Uh, but I wanted, I wanted to make sure we had, the committee had all of the data in front of them before, uh, we make a decision. Uh, so at least you have a, a, a week to, to, you know, review the data, ask some questions of myself and Barbara. And then we have to make a decision because as Barbara said, I mean, we have a thousand people that we, there's a lot of work that's behind the scenes that has to be done. And even thinking of whether just cutting checks or crediting accounts, uh, there are two very difficult things to, to manage. And, uh, we wanna make sure we do it, you know, that the most efficient way possible for our staff as well. So, so I'll, I'll leave it there and you can ask Barbara questions.
Well, that was my question, Jim, about credit, crediting accounts. Is that as administratively difficult as cutting a thousand checks?
Yes.
It is.
That was quick, Barbara.
I mean, we can do it either way. I don't think it, it, one way is any easier than the other.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for Barbara on this?
Yeah. So Barbara, um, is there a, you know how like there's 50 cents per mile federal standard reimbursement rate? Is there something for heavy-duty industrial like buses? Cause I'm assuming the buses consume diesel fuel, which is a different price point. And just from the calculations that they did, you said you were just doing like an average of what's at the pump. Is there like a federal number that we should be looking at as the standard? That's my first question. My second question is, if we then are offering refunds, could you give the option of having, depending on where this is in the budget, if parents said, no, keep it, to help keep other areas of the school afloat? Can you then turn it into a donation and move it out of bus revolving?
Uh, so your first question, um, written into the contract with Connolly is how the gasoline rate is calculated. Um, it, it's off some index. I, I don't know it off the top of my head.
Yep.
But the contract says that's the rate we use. Now, if gas rates go up 20% more, 20 cents more or down 20 cents more, then we do fuel adjustments. But we're just using the rate on the index.
Okay.
Okay. And your second question, um, yeah, I'm sure there's some, there's a couple of ways that, that that could be done.
Okay.
The money could be changed to donations.
But it, and it, I just wanna make sure it's not trapped there because I'm guessing some people would probably choose to do that rather than ask for the refund check, which would then maybe reduce some of the work of all the people you'd have to turn into a vendor.
Right.
I'm just gonna add some levity. I want my names on all the checks that go out.
Okay.
Okay, Jim.
Yeah. Um, so Aaron, did I answer everything?
Yeah, yeah. Thanks, Barbara.
Barbara, just so I understand the, uh, the numbers there. So when you say 100%, that's reimbursing them the pro-rated. You know, you took the, the fee and divided by the 180 days and, and that's 100% of the pro-rated amount for those days, right?
Correct. It's 100% of the rate for the 30 days or the 63 days.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, and I, 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 I saw the thing about the Connolly proposal. And, you know, a question about how, uh, other districts or whether there's any guidance on how to approach this. Because certainly the things that, that they took, they kind of described taking off, um, are obvious ones, right? They're not, they're, the expenses not incurred by them. What's remaining may or may not be incurred by them, uh, if they're keeping on their staff, like their maintenance staff. So even though they might not be doing all the maintenance on the buses, it might still be paying the people. However, if they are applying for some of the payroll protection loans and things like that, then paying, you know, ba- based on that proposal and them getting that, uh, you know, would sound at least on, on the surface, and certainly I don't know their situation, to make them more than viable, right? So is there any consideration into the negotiations you've seen where there's conditions put in there that, that they agree to something and then it's, it's changed based on the, uh, the federal assistance that they might be getting that they, for loans and things like that, that they wouldn't need to pay back?
So Paul, the answer is, is yes. We did talk to Steve Sullivan about that. So they're, they're in the process of applying, um, to the SBA. If, they would only get reimbursement for, uh, the full-time staff that they're still paying, obviously. And so it, it's difficult for us to negotiate what we don't know is yet. So yeah, we're trying to look to some language as if something happens, new negotiations will take place or, or something. But we're still waiting for the legal docu- document, uh, Needham. Council is drafting up, um, a document that we can all share with each other, um, to sign off with what the changes are and, and what's expected. So, that's kind of why we can't have you vote tonight. Um, I'm hoping to have that document by tomorrow.
Yeah, and, and, because my, my general concern is the wrong word, but we, we wanna do the right thing by everyone. But, you know, the, the expenses they took off the daily rate are expenses they're not incurring, right? So what's left should make them viable by itself. And then they, they get something else. You know, I know they're not also getting the, the extra services that we would normally pay for, uh, you know, the, the late, the different, uh, charters for, for programs and stuff like that.
Yeah, so, um, they, Steve did share with us today that the charters, which are field trips and athletic buses from March through June last year, we paid over $60,000, but their districts in total paid a million. That Connolly brought in a million dollars from those runs during those months. And they're not doing that this year. And they're not looking for us to assist with any of that.
Right. But, you know, a part of me is like, well, that's all, there's no new base cost for, for them operating that really, right? That, that is all those, A, they didn't, they didn't perform the service, so they're not incurring new, uh, new, new expenses there, right? So.
Right.
You know, like I said, I, I, I think personally, I, I wanna do the right thing by making, making sure, they're viable to service next year, but also be prudent in that, you know, I don't wanna be in the same boat. You, you kind of alluded to it. I know lots of people complaining about sending lots of people in the boat where they're making more money on unemployment than they are working. And I don't want this to be one of those situations where they're in better shape come next year because we paid this and they got something else. Now we weren't being, uh, very responsible from a fiduciary's perspective with, with our, our fund, right?
Well, I think, I think what you're looking for, Paul, is some sort of offset language for the value of, of any federal, federal money or, or money from other sources that effectively is not, does not have to be paid. Right? You're not talking about loans that they would have to repay, but things that turn into grants that put another, whether it's $500 or $50,000 in their pocket, they shouldn't be getting ahead on this. That, that value, one way or another, should be returned to the 18 districts that work with them.
Right? Yeah. Yeah. So, and, and, and that's where I was getting at, to make sure. And I know that's difficult because it's a undefined moving target, right?
Um, and I just have two final points, um, I'll make on this. One is, just as I was logging in this afternoon to join this, I saw an email from someone stating that, uh, the Department of Revenue will be coming out next week with guidance on the transportation, especially as it pertains to the law that says we cannot pay if service is not provided. So Department of Revenue is gonna come out with some guidance on that. And then just to let you know, uh, this week, we also started having conversations with Accept about their transportation and whether there's any savings there. So that will be coming down the road.
And, and Barbara, sorry, I have one more question. So, um, on that sheet, uh, I, I kinda asked this to Jim yesterday, so I'll, I'll ask you. The, that savings, is it a true savings or is it just not an expend, something? So, and what I mean by that is, you know, if we were to go on and have normal school, our ending balance in the revolving account is X. So is that net savings and, you know, estimated to be that it would be X plus that number? Or, you know, you know what I mean? So it's, I, I know it's a, it's a difference in what we would pay, for sure. But is it a true savings or, you know, you know, the, probably not asking it very well, but, uh, there's certainly, it's certainly a difference in what our price would, our, our cost would be. But is it, at the end of the day, costing us, uh, you know, a certain amount overall? That, that, I don't know if I made, made a lot of sense.
I, I see it as a pure savings. Um, we budgeted $204,000 for the last 63 days of school for buses and, well, we budgeted more than that, but we're not gonna pay out 204,000 of it. So it's definitely a savings to our budget.
But Barbara, what about the late bus and the spring athletic buses? Are those true, are those true cost savings to us? Or are they, are they savings that are, are, we'll, we'll go back into, say, that the revolving account for transportation?
So the late buses are true savings. That, that's a calculation, um, I did based on the actual daily rate. The spring athletic buses, this is what Steve Marks put in the budget for FY20 for spring transportation. Now, the athletic budget is combined general fund and revolving fund. And we don't split out item by item, which goes to which account. But honestly, by the springtime, I'm usually paying for those spring athletic budgets, buses out of the general fund budget because the athletic doesn't have any more money. So, um, I, I don't know how you wanna look at it. I look at it as a savings.
Okay, now that savings will be reduced by whatever we do in terms of refunds, right?
Correct. Yeah.
And that's why, that's why I had Barbara throw in the, the bus refund amounts, the 100% and the, and the 45.7. Cause then we can see the net savings, if we agreed to the plan, would be the 150,000 or the 199,000 if it was a 63 day.
Barbara, do you need any more direction from the committee as a whole to further the negotiations with Connolly along?
No. So how we left it on the conference call today is we all told Steve Sullivan, he asked us for some assurances that we were comfortable bringing to our committees and everyone agreed. So each district is now bringing it to their school committee meeting. So over this week and next week. we'll get together as a group and kind of feel out, you know, how everybody's going. You know, where are they thinking? Are they comfortable with it? So if you have any more questions, you know, after tonight, you know, just certainly get them to Jim or me and I'll post them back to Sullivan Bus, to Connolly Bus.
I certainly share Paul's thought process around if there's a way to get a grip on what other sources may be coming to Connolly to help them. You know, I think having some sort of offset or reopen or whatever you want to call it, I think is an appropriate thing to try to address.
Right. Yep, I'm hearing that loud and clear. Okay, so this kind of covered the FY twenty bus fees. I want to put that up to you. So I think now we want to talk about the FY twenty-one bus fees. So the registration forms did already go out with the same fees and dates that we've had in previous years. So it's three fifty for an individual, seven hundred for a family unless you register and pay before May first. Then it's two eighty and five sixty for a family. So Jim and I have had some discussions with Erin about what this looks like. She does have about five hundred registrations that are already returned. But we are thinking that would like to push out the payment due date. The difficulty for us is we need the registration information sooner than later to stop getting together some bus routes. So I think what we're asking for is a vote to change the bus fees for FY twenty-one to still be the three fifty, seven hundred. If you do not register, we'll change the registration date to the middle of May, so May fifteenth. So as long as you send in your registration by May fifteenth, the payment would be due by August first. And then you could still get the two sixty, two eighty-five, sixty rate. Questions?
Barbara, in that framework, what does the additional amount of time do for anybody? If it's not going to cost anything, why not just hold people to the May first date to begin with?
Well, because I'm not sure that the stimulus checks have gone out yet. I don't know if the six hundred dollar federal unemployment has gone out yet. I think they're very close to doing those things, but May first is a couple of weeks away.
Right.
We were, so Mark, we were just trying to be cognizant of a lot of families and the loss of jobs and the tremendous amounts of stressors that do exist within our community. That's all we were doing.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I would think it's appropriate to be sensitive to collecting any payments just in the immediate future until we get some of the other scenarios ironed out when we're going back, if we're going back.
Yeah, and I understand a little bit, Laurie. I think my point is not about the payment, but about the registration. And that the difference between May first and May fifteenth is in terms of having people submit a form saying, yes, I want to take the bus next year. No costs associated with it now really is just a placeholder, right? I mean, there's nothing to stop somebody from as late as the end of July saying, never mind. This is, and I understand if you legitimately don't think we needed the information until later, fine. Just it seemed like the two were not necessarily connected and, you know, it's sort of one more piece of communication that changes and some people just get flustered by that. I certainly don't have a major objection to providing more time if people think it's a good idea.
I think it was more about the time of, to your point though, Mark, it's the time of payment versus we need the information as soon as we can get it. In terms of, so Erin can set bus routes. That's the challenge. So if we pushed it back to the August, if we made August first the deadline, there's no way she's getting the bus routes prepared and out to the families. It's not going to work.
Right, but I think Mark is saying in part that the information may not be as reliable as it was in the past.
It may not be, Laurie.
Right, but I'm saying, I agree with that process under these circumstances. It's probably not going to be as reliable as you want it to be, but it is some information to be able to move forward. And it also is an opportunity to any financial requirements for just a little while.
I think maybe I'm not being clear in my point because it really is not about the money. It's really about the deadline, I think, as I understand it right now, is May first for people to submit the form. And in the past, that would have also included the check. What I hear is we're changing two things. One is removing the May first deadline to May fifteenth for letting us know. And then we're also changing the payment deadline from May first to August first. I'm not worried about the payment deadline. I'm simply posing the question of what is, what is the value of giving people two more weeks' time to submit the piece of paper saying basically, I'm interested in bus services and I'll write you a check in a couple of months if I'm still interested. I'm not.
I think we were trying to address the need for us to get the word out to everyone. You know, two weeks is not going to make that much of a difference, but if we can get the word out to people, I think the May first deadline would be tight for some.
Okay. I'm not saying that, I'm not opposed to it. I just wanted to flush it out, that's all.
Yeah, and Mark, the emails I've received regarding transportation is quite often families come in and drop off checks and registration. They're not mailing them. They're not going out. They're coming to the schools. And those are the concerns that they've written to me. It's like, we don't have this option right now. So are you going to extend the deadline? What are you going to do in order for us to be able to meet and not pay the additional fees?
Okay, thank you.
Just a couple of, I'm assuming because you're offering it, that the logistical challenges of having those two gates and communicating to those that still owe prior to August first, which isn't going to be a meaningful date to them in general, that we're going to do something to ping them, to remind them that they need to pay and things like that. Assuming all that logistical change is something that's manageable for you and Erin, Barbara?
So yeah, I also have that thought. But let's just say it's a good thing I'm not retiring until October. Because I'll be around, I'll be around to help with all that.
And I guess the other question to put on my Erin Williams hat is, is there any thought or possibility of allowing people, if there's not a payment associated with it now, right? To having it be a Google form that they could fill out and get that information to you that way and not require a piece of paper?
Yeah, let me talk to Erin about that.
Oh, you beat me to that one by thirty seconds.
Can I just say something?
Of course. Where are you?
The City Hall, City Hall Systems.
Oh, Erin.
Is the online, is the online system? That anyone can sign up on that and you don't have to pay a fee by signing up on City Hall Systems? So they have that option as well?
That's awesome.
Excellent. Good to know. Thanks.
So I would, I would then ask Barbara and Erin to get me some language that I can include in my newsletter that goes out Friday morning. Should the committee agree to what you're asking or whatever dates.
Okay.
I'm certainly fine with what you proposed to just, you know, add those questions. That sounds like a logistical nightmare from your perspective. But if you're proposing it, I assume it's doable.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barbara. And then I think you're next also, Barbara, with the Driscoll Scholarship.
Oh, yes. So every year, there's a Driscoll Scholarship, actually, we're doing two again this year, given out at graduation. I'm not sure how that's going to work. But the trust document requires a committee made up of the head of guidance at the high school, the business managers. So we're set. And then there's one school committee member who you'll need to vote tonight to be a member of the committee and two other individuals. And Mary Lou Hunt would like to participate again. And Lauren G. and Betty at the high school has agreed to sit on the committee again. So I need you to vote in three people, Lauren G., Jean Betty, Mary Lou Hunt, and then one school committee member.
So there's, does anybody want to volunteer? I know Erin Williams, you've done it in the past, so have you had enough and you want to pass the torch? Or do you, is that something you want to continue with? Are you here?
I don't see her.
No.
We'll probably be figuring out how to do it online.
Okay.
Somehow, yeah.
Laurie, I'm happy to do it this year. I haven't done it this one in the past. Unless somebody else has a strong desire to do it, I'm happy to do it.
Excellent.
Thanks.
Kelly?
Can I ask a question about that? Just because it came up at a meeting today specifically with Driscoll. And I assume a lot of scholarship groups will be changing how they're collecting information. But we already have students reaching out to ask teachers to directly send them letters of recommendation for the scholarship. I think because how it's worded. So if you could just think about how, you know, teachers were hoping they could just email you, Barbara, their recommendations directly or something like that, but just wanted to bring it up.
All right, let me think on that, Kelly.
Thanks, Kelly. And thank you, Mark. I'm good with that, Mark. Anybody else?
Yeah, no, me too. Thank you, Mark.
My pleasure.
All right. Do you want me to make a motion, Laurie? Are we, are we done?
You can make a motion, Kathy. I think it's Mark.
Okay, I move to appoint Mary Lou Hunt, Lauren, Jean Betty, and Mark Terry from the school committee to serve on the Driscoll Scholarship Committee for the current year.
Excellent. We have a second? Okay, and all in favor of the roll call, Mr. Kendall?
Hi.
Mr. Terry?
Hi.
Mrs. Bates?
Hi.
An I for me and that passes. Thank you.
Great.
Next up?
Barbara again.
Barbara again, Washington DC trip.
Yeah, this one can get very confusing, so I hope I can lay it out easy.
I'm going to, Barbara, I'll share the screen.
Oh, good.
Okay.
Yep. So the Washington DC trip for eighth graders, the contract requires us to submit a non-refundable deposit of a hundred and twenty-five dollars per student. So in December, we sent them capital towards twenty thousand dollars, which is non-refundable. So option one and option two that I'm asking to think of are pretty straightforward. Option one is we return all the money to the parents and we find the twenty thousand dollars in our budget to cover that cost. Option two is the parents lose their deposit of a hundred and twenty-five, but then get refunded any money above that. So those are pretty two straightforward options. The third one gets a little more confusing. The second and third payment that parents make are three hundred dollars each. The first payment is three hundred and forty-five dollars. That forty-five dollars is for trip insurance on the non-refundable portion. That forty-five dollar payment gives them a refund of seventy-five percent of the hundred and twenty-five dollars, so ninety-three seventy-five. The issue is the money never got sent to the insurance company. And in working with Capital Tours and the insurance company, the twenty thousand we sent capital was based on a hundred and sixty students. We're now up to a hundred and eighty-one. So we would have to pay capital of a hundred and twenty-five dollars for the additional twenty-one students. And then the trip insurance was just under eight thousand dollars that we would have to pay to the company. We were not comfortable handing out any more money. So so parents paid the hundred and twenty-five non-refundable deposit plus a forty-five dollar insurance payment. The insurance would cover seventy-five percent and ninety-three seventy-five would be refunded to parents. All monies over the hundred and seventy are fully refunded. We have some people who have paid for the trip in full. I mean, they'll get everything above that back. So in effect, we would be acting as the insurance, insurance agent. So we will pay the parents back the ninety-three seventy-five. Let's, parents are not refunded to seventy-six twenty-five, so they'll lose the twenty-five percent in the forty-five dollars. So they will not get, they'll be returned everything but seventy-six twenty-five. And the cost that we would have to cover is sixty-two hundred dollars. So those are the three options for refunding a hundred and eighty-one families here on top of the thousand for the buses. So thoughts?
So Barbara, just, you know, I'll ask the obvious question. So I'm assuming the tour company is not doing anything like Connolly and the bus companies where they're evaluating their actual expenditures on this and they're just essentially telling us to pound sand, you gave us a non-refundable, non-refundable means non-refundable even in a pandemic.
So I want to say there've been very good discussions with Capital Tours. He was certainly very open about their situation, you know, they're trying to stay in business. They have applied for one of the SBA grant loans. And he has said to me that if they get it, they will move some of the deposit. He said he's hoping ten thousand dollars of the deposit to next year's trip. And that's what they've offered.
Right, but they're not doing anything similar to Connolly that says, hey, you know, we took twenty thousand dollars. We didn't expend, we expended X and we can't get that back, but you know, we're going to do something about the remainder. They're, they're claiming that that twenty, twenty grand is, you know, required for their general operation and they weren't going to do anything unless they got federal assistance.
Well, let me frame it just a little bit differently. However, we never, we didn't pay them all the money we collected from the students. If we had paid them, they would have two hundred thousand dollars of our money and they would return everything but the twenty thousand.
Right.
Right.
I get that. I guess my, my point is, the whole purpose, the legitimate known purpose for non-refundable deposits is, you know, doesn't, isn't for these kinds of circumstances, right? Therefore, hey, we don't want to go now, our circumstance changes. Listen, you know, we needed to make preparations for your trip and things like that and to make sure that people are committed to utilizing their services. It makes perfect sense. In a situation like this, you know, holding on to that twenty thousand when they didn't expend it for our trip, you know, seems like a way to otherwise cover expenses that had nothing to do with us booking a trip.
But Paul, I think it really depends on what we agreed to in writing, if anything. So if we agreed that that was non-refundable, it doesn't matter what the reason is or well, unless within the contract it says, except for an act of thought or something, which some of them do. So I guess my question to you, Barbara, is do you know in the paperwork with the parents, were they informed that the hundred and twenty-five dollars would be non-refundable? Did they sign something where they understood it to be non-refundable?
I'm not sure what paperwork they were given. I do know they filled out, they knew they were paying for insurance. they were paying for insurance. So I'll have to check with Mary Moynah on that. And I will say that from what I've seen across the state, no one, I have heard of no one having any success getting deposit money back from touring companies across the board.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it really just boils down to the contract language and who has the upper hand for that. So, you know, if people understood that $125 of whatever they've paid so far was non-refundable, then I'm more comfortable with option number two, because it's non-refundable and everything else over and above that, if we're still holding on to it, great, we just return it. And people are at 125, but that was what everybody agreed to, even though nobody anticipated this particular scenario.
Right.
It is something that, that everybody agreed to, whether they were aware of it or not. If they weren't aware of it, then that gets a little bit cloudier for me, about whether or not we need to take some responsibility for that. But I would want to know the answer to that question.
Okay, I will reach out to Mary Moynah.
Yeah, and just my, I don't like number two at all, regardless of what we're obligated to do by language. You know, me, it's either option one or option three, you know, because $6,200 to us, to us as a district relative to whatever, 100 bucks is to any particular one of those families. You know, I think at minimum, we're talking that, just, you know, it's one of, like I said, regardless whether they signed something that was non-refundable, that, that, that no one, of course, you know, really signs that with the expectation of what's going on right now. So, and if we have the ability to do what I'll label as what I think is the right thing, and try and do support people, and, 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 you know, I think we should try and do that as best we can.
I do, I really do want to do the right thing too, Paul, but I think that contract language is important, and especially needs to be considered in the big picture of everything that's going on here, because you're right, $6,200 is nothing in this little scenario. But then you add, we're trying to give goodwill to the bus company, and you add all these other little areas of our budget that are going to be harmed, and it's a bigger deal. So I think we have to make these decisions, you know, with the whole big picture in mind.
All right, so we're not asking for a vote tonight. We will be putting this on the agenda again next week and asking for a vote then. So I'll get the information that you're looking for, Laurie, and get it out to everybody.
Okay. Anybody else?
Just, yeah, comments or questions, Mark? I was just gonna say, on this one, I'm gonna be quiet now, and probably next week, I'm gonna just, we've got an eighth grader in the house, so I'm gonna recuse myself from anything that might have an impact on my own wallet here.
I just have a question, if I can, Laurie, sorry. I'm just confused over the insurance. So there was an insurance payment, but we didn't, we didn't, actually, probably schools didn't pay the insurance company?
In the first payment that parents made, there was $45 paid to the schools for insurance. Before we could make that payment, everything closed. It was just a matter of timing.
I see, okay.
Yeah, we couldn't, yeah, every trip got shut down. And then I had discussions with Capital Tours, do we still pay the insurance and have the families pay the insurance company for that refund?
Okay.
And financially, it was just us putting more money out to vendors.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
So I guess on that, Barbara, just to, just to understand the mechanics of it, the insurance, so the reason it costs us $6,200 is because we would be taking the $45 and the 93.75 that they would be refunding, and we would be responsible for the remain, the 93 minus the 45, and that's where the $6,200 came from?
Yeah.
Now, in that insurance, that $45 insurance payment, what was that to cover? Is that, would that have covered the deposit?
That only covers the non-refundable deposit of $125.
Right. So I'm not even sure how option two's on the table. If we, if we received money from them with the intent that they were getting insurance on that $125, they made the payment, the insurance payment to us. But I don't even see how, and I, you know, I don't want to be, make it sound like somebody discreet to me, they're not being ethical, but from my perspective, ethically speaking, option two, I'm not comfortable with at all. If somebody gave me the $45 insurance payment with the expectation they had just covered their $125 investment, 75% of it, I don't know that how we would go and do option two.
Yeah, I hear you.
Yeah, I hear that too, Paul.
Yeah.
Okay, so, you know, I guess we just come back with additional information and some more insight into what makes the most sense, and talk about it next time.
Yeah, I think it would help to see what, what was the, maybe, I think you already said this, you'll talk to Mary Moynah, like what was the, what was the paper that this parent signed? What, what, what were they thinking when they wrote that check, I guess? But that, I think that would help, so.
Okay, yeah, I'll get that.
I mean, I think two things are simultaneously possibly true, is that they were thinking that they were making a non-refundable deposit, maybe, but they were also thinking that they had insurance.
Right.
That would cover everything that went wrong. So, you know, how, how do you find a solution within those two possible truths that could be consistently true at the same time?
Yeah.
And I think, I think, though, the solution also depends on looking at in terms of all the other things we're trying to do right by. You know, we're trying to do right by a lot of different things, by the bus company, by our employees, and, you know, at some point, the costs are gonna become prohibitive for us, or have a cost on our end that, that, you know, we need to understand what that is.
Right.
Before we're making, you know, all these little piecemeal decisions, I'm thinking. So.
Yeah.
Nothing else to do today, though? No vote, no decision? Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Barbara, for all that.
And I think the, I think the greater point is, we're gonna be coming to you with many more complicated decisions with regard to the finances in the next two months, with all of our fee structures that we have in place. So this is not gonna be simple. I think that's important to understand, that, that's why, you know, Barbara and I talked about not having a decision today, but having it continually brought before you to start giving you the data, and if you need more, then please reach out to us, so we can get those answers for that, the next meeting.
So. Sorry, go ahead, Paul.
Just, just to kind of go piggyback on what Laurie said, what you said, then is there a time where we think we'll have a better overall picture and not go about this piecemeal?
Yeah, true.
August? No, I'm not being, I'm not being sarcastic. I'm saying, I don't think we're gonna have any clarity with regard to even a state budget before mid-July.
And I'm not talking about next year's stuff. I'm talking about this, this year's stuff, relative to bus contract, all these different things, and getting some clarity around those moving parts and how it affects what we do this fiscal year.
Sure. No, I, I think, Paul, it's a good question. I think this fiscal year, we've been taking the lead in continuing dialogue with the town to see if we need to be focused on making any potential cuts in the FY20 budget. And at this point, we've been told we're status quo where we are. We put a freeze into place, as has the town, with regard to spending. I think the sooner we can make some decisions, the better off we are, you know, incrementally making the decision on the buses. That's important, because that could help then determine what we do with potential DC trip refunds. Are there financial, is there financial capacity to handle absorbing that? So I think it's, I think they're dominos. I don't think it's as simple as just saying we're gonna have these four huge financial decisions be made without understanding how one can affect the other.
Right, and how they may not be able to, right?
That's right.
For transportation, savings in that revolving account doesn't help us for something we can't use those funds for, right?
That, that's right. But, you know, if, if, if we're looking at a total operating, and there goes to Barbara's point about the $26,000 for athletics, is that a true savings? And the answer is yes, and that, that, that has potential to be used in a different capacity.
I think my, my question is gonna be similar to Paul's, I think, but maybe let me pose it a different way. Is there at least an ability to have a sense of what the totality of these types of issues are that are out there? Not a resolution or an outcome, but, you know, we've identified the DC trip, we've identified on the bus contract, you know, are there a list of other contractual issues that may impact? And even if we can't sit down and sort of say, okay, if we do this, we can do that, can they play out more like dominos? Just have a sense of the overall amount of money that's involved in the contracts that we might have to revisit, may give us a better sense as we take on issues one at a time. As to, okay, there's this potential savings down the road and stuff, to look at it, but it's only $50 as opposed to $50,000. Might be informative to some of the individual decisions we do make, we do, we, is that reasonable, Jim, or doable?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then also kind of pairing together, you know, certain categories of things, because I think it's gonna be important to be able to be consistent as well.
Right.
If we're helping, you know, helping in one area.
Sure.
Be hard to say in another. So I guess anything else that could pop up, we should be aware of.
Right.
Yeah.
And I think to Mr. Kendall's point, too, with regard to, we, we have been very focused as a, as a group on doing what's right for our employees, and, and I applaud that effort by the school committee. And I think doing right by our community members and citizens is, should be also at the forefront of our conversation, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Jim, thanks, Barbara.
Okay. Next. Kathy, do you have anything?
I do. Let's see. Okay. Can you hear me all right? You want me to read the warrants? Between February 27th, 2020, and March 11th, 2020, I, Kathleen Bates, authorized by my signature, payables in the amount of $295,049.59. This includes general fund expenses of $172,288.93, revolving expenses of $81,083.31, and grant expenses of $4,014.85, and capital, capital, $37,662.50. Finally, I authorize payroll in the amount of $1,134,493.37.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay. Approval of minutes, April 8th. Does anybody have anything on those?
No, I didn't have any edits.
Nothing.
Anybody else? Does anybody have a motion to accept the minutes of April 8th?
I moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, Mrs. Bates?
Yes, aye.
Mr. Terry?
Hi.
Mr. Kendall?
Hi.
Yeah, myself, aye. That passes. And do we have any gifts and donations today?
We do. We have one from a Sir Paul Kendall, $150 HP Office, 76' and wide format, all one printer, for the Special Ed Office.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve that?
Thanks, Paul.
Kathy's clapping.
Kathy made the motion. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Mark, thank you. And all in favor, Mr. Terry?
Hi.
Mrs. Bates?
Hi.
Mr. Kendall?
Hi.
And myself, aye. That passes. And member updates, I always want to hear from Rachel, who's been sitting very patiently. What's happening, Rachel?
Not much. Everything is still pretty much the same. You know, my classes, I'm preparing for AP exams. Pretty much adjusted to this online learning. And then I've just been checking with my friends, making sure they're doing okay. Other than that, I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank all the teachers and administrators for everything they're doing for us. I'm proud to be part of such an amazing community.
Wow, that was so nice. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. And your friends are hanging in there and doing okay?
Yeah. I mean, it's tough, but we're getting through it.
Yep. Thank you. Do any other school committee members have anything they want to share? I know none of us are actually going anywhere, but there are quite a few Zoom meetings happening. I know last night, Paul, that there was a vote on, with the tri board that you might want to talk about?
Yeah, so I was gonna give that update. Just thank you to school committee, obviously, for the support, but we do now have a preferred design option for the Mendez School Building Project. So the site that was chosen is over on the Mendez site. I've actually taken the presentation from last night and pared it down to the 17 slides that are contextual to the information on that, only on that option. And I'll, that's already up on the website, but I'll post it and send it, send it around so people can more easily digest that. So thank you to the select board of income for their support on it, and also to building committee members, and particularly Jim and Mike, they put a lot of time into the plan, and that's a, that's a heavy lift part of this process. So just thank you to everyone for the, for the support.
Thank you to all. Anybody else? I know Kelly's quiet today, but I sat on her Zoom Site Council meeting this week, and I know that they're working very hard to figure out some of these things relative to high school grades and other things that I'm sure that we'll be hearing from you eventually, Kelly. So thank you for that. It was nice to see that everybody's faces and hear from the kids a little bit about how they're doing. You know, there's a lot going on for them, boredom in some cases, and a little bit of stress, too, about the college application process and what this all means. So certainly sensitive to, to all of that, and trying to reassure everybody continuously that we're on the same boat everywhere, in the town, in the state, in the country, in the world. So hopefully, everybody's keeping that in perspective as best as possible. So that's it for me. I think that's it. Action items, Jim. I guess they're just the same as what they've always been. And I will take a motion to adjourn if nobody else has anything.
To adjourn?
Thank you, Mark. Second?
I'll second.
All in favor, Mark?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Kathy?
Aye.
Laurie?
Aye.
All right. Meeting is over. Have a.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
You're all.
Thank you.
Take care.